We have some computers, we also have, I think we have some things. He was wanting to know if also if, if he did get permission to get his tool shed for next year, whether that tool shed could be in the auction or that I think they'll be talking to you about that. Uh, park board has, um, lawnmowers that need to come to be in.
We're having this over at the.
I'm using it.
Can you bring them over here?
He said he would bring them over. So we just need to maybe check out the date with you so we can get going and tell the departments and get everything organized.
Yeah, that's great. I'll make the motion because that needs to get reported for me. You got a time?
We probably did like we did the last time, I think it started on maybe at eleven noon or twelve or something.
Okay, so I got a motion in a second to have it at, you say nine?
Nine AM.
Nine AM on the River Clay.
As a silent auction.
For a silent auction. Does the highway department have anything to put into the auction?
We do. I know we have a bunch of trucks out there, we've been putting up at the, uh, old Indots, um.
Down up north?
Yeah, stores.
We have a lot of truck up there?
We have about five vehicles up there.
Oh, really?
Are they big trucks, small trucks?
Big, I'll, I'll, I can get the list for you.
Is there a pickup truck?
No.
You, you also have the option, you could do yours separate if you wanted. We have, we have in the past, uh, had a, uh, sealed bid on trucks that we just sat out in front of the highway. Will those run? Will they drive down?
Yeah, we drove them up there.
Okay, well, we'll do them up there or you can do them over at the highway garage. Last year, last time we went up to the highway garage, just lined them up.
Park and Mary on the, yeah, the east side of the line.
Yeah, on the east side, that's right. Uh, um, there's the, um. I think there's a, a, a little disturbance that causes of people coming in and talking to your mechanics and stuff and saying, hey, what about this truck out here and what's wrong with it? And you know, it, there, there's a, that takes up a little time of your people. But it's however you want to.
I'll talk to them.
Okay, okay.
The other thing too is the pool car.
Yes.
Nobody really is using that. Um, Cameron did, he says there's, um, a little bit of things probably going wrong. Here he is.
No, dude.
Pool car, I, I, whether you want to put it in there, I mean, is it worth keeping if you have only a couple of people using it? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't think it is worth it, we'll have a couple of people. Cameron advises on the, uh, pool car. The pool car.
Oh, I, I took it to Carolyn.
I was suggesting putting it in the auction, so.
Is it being used now by anybody or no?
I had, uh, once I went on my trip, I took her over to County Highway and they helped me get it. They needed a new battery, the tires were, you know, so there, I did three or four things to, just to get it to where it could be driven again. But, yeah, I don't think it's used.
Okay, would it be your opinion that we should auction it?
I mean, I don't know who, I don't know who signs it out.
Well, I guess I'm thinking in terms of.
Any, any other department uses it besides Cameron?
I think Eric does, I know Sharon has asked to use it, uh, but he never has, um, I don't know.
Well, see the council didn't prefer to keep, keep the military truck out there.
Or did it prove kept keeping the military truck?
Yeah, they said we didn't need the truck.
Well, it, it does in a way because if we can put the truck in the pool car position and get rid of the pool car, then Keith can use that truck if he wants.
And I guess that too.
Exactly.
Yes.
What if I adopt that military truck? And put that military truck up underneath me?
Then if you have assistance to help you, you can make your truck.
Well, that truck could be used for a multitude of things. And then, if I'm out on a call and I need a volunteer fire department to grab something else for me, just like the volunteer firefighters, you can drive the ambulance. As if I have a roster, that truck is, well, I need to build it, but. We could also use that, you know, if you put a plow on front of it and Keith could use it to plow the park, he might, he could use it to take care of.
Is it four wheel drive or?
Oh, yeah.
It's been, it's been rebuilt thirty, forty years ago.
I mean, I don't know what's all wrong with it, it might not even be worth keeping.
Is this, is it something you'd like in your fleet?
I, it's possible, I mean, it's, those trucks are durable, I just don't know what's all wrong with it. I drove a Cut V in nineteen eighty-six. I don't know what year that one, I think it's a ninety-four, but.
I think it's older than that.
It's, it was five.
It's an eighty-six.
Seventy-four, eighty-eight.
They're better old trucks, I just, I don't know what's all wrong with it and it might not be the issue. He said it ran great. I just don't know, you know, if it's.
He just blew it fine.
I did for a while. Well, let's go back to the pool car, if I say, can I make a motion to put it in the auction?
Who do you think, Lauren?
Well, yeah, enough, just want to be used, it's good.
I mean, we can still keep it, they, they could give us money, like a thousand dollars for it, so. I don't know, I just.
It's, it's, that's a machine.
No, they're gonna rescue it, they're gonna, they're getting rid of it.
That's all part of it here. You know what year it is, but?
Probably eighteen or eleven. I make a motion myself.
A lot, a lot of people aren't using it, so you're doing the same thing. I mean, a lot of people are not using the pool car, so.
Still paying.
Still paying, yeah.
Give me a second, okay, so I got a motion in a second to sell the pool car. Call the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed.
Can I make a motion to donate that truck to the, you know, Mike?
Or do you need management?
Put him here now?
You got some more equipment inside?
No.
I got three hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Mike said, so we can just leave it where it's at and just, uh, what you got?
Oh, I, well, I just, Mike reminded me too, I, we got that old white, um, the priest did, and I would appreciate it for a while.
You want to get rid of it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I just gotta get radio to step out of it at least, I think.
Well, that will be in the parking head's email block, they want to be, in, in the auction list.
All right, good.
Okay, so the next one is the edit, you want to go with that or do you want to get?
What the mountain Carol find out, are they gonna help you? There he is.
Like, if you don't mind. Sure, please.
Um, so, we were trying to look for a vehicle in order to get that pedestrian crossway kind of worked out, uh, with Chris. And we, we've talked and I think that the best, one of the best solutions could be going underneath the bridge, building, building a dock, uh, for pedestrian access. But one thing that we wanted to, to maybe give your guidance, guidance on is, um, the possibility of using underneath the bridge as a public access site. So, so essentially, we would be looking at having the first public access site on Lake Freeman.
And another one?
As far as I know, there are no public access sites on Lake Freeman.
There are boat ramps, but not in terms of the, just a dock to fish off of or.
So like, somebody can't take their son fishing on Lake Freeman because there's nowhere to really do that publicly. Um, if we were to work a partnership together with, with the Mountain Carol and, and Shaker Freeman Lakes Environmental Association, um, we could look at putting a walkway under there that allows pedestrians to traverse from his, from both the Mountain Carol's properties on both sides of the highway, um, and then work on granting easement, public easement access to that, uh, dock.
But they would have to be granting public easement across their property.
Correct. Correct, and I, and I, they're willing, they're willing to talk about what that could look like.
That can cause a lot of trouble. I, I think it could. Especially if you got all the people walking underneath there and you have people down there fishing and. I can see some.
I, I, I think, I think it's a conversation, so, again, this is a, this is challenging because if I were to say, you know, we want to put a, a walkway over the highway, right? We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, but then, public property to public property. But we have the same solution, uh, but fiscally conservative with something like this, it gets a little harder because we own both sides of the bridge. Again, my only dog in this fight is making sure nobody gets killed on that highway. So, uh, Jake and I have been at least having the conversations about the vessel to put that. Those finances through, whether it's easement, whether it's, uh, we're, we're not sure. Uh, and so we're waiting on some communication back from Ceplex, since it is, uh, Ceplex property underneath of the bridge itself, it's not ours. Uh, so we're brainstorming and this is one of the ideas we just kind of brought to the table within the last week and we're waiting on communication back from Ceplex.
Who owns under the bridge, I'm sorry?
Ceplex, Shaker Freeman Lakes.
State has nothing to do with it, with the bridge?
State has a right away there, but.
Yeah, so the state requires a, uh, there's just a construction permit and the state's, uh, Indot is intimately familiar with the, the situation we have. Uh, so they just require the, I have an application put in that's essentially a, like a near construction permit. Uh, it just says, near this entity will be doing X, Y, and Z, but it's not, it's, it's on Ceplex property since they own the, the lake bed and, and the shorelines.
How wide is this, I forget, how wide is this?
Six foot in the design we have right now.
Six foot wide pier underneath there.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be dual purpose, ideally it's going to be for computers for the boats during the day. But yeah, it would, it would present a challenge if, if someone was fishing down there.
My concern is a lot of people want, they'll hear, know it's there, they're going to want to fish, they're going to be taking up this parking park's customer.
Oh, yeah.
That's a, that's a good fishing spot over there.
Right now, that already happens. People are parking over there and they're climbing down the rocks under the highway. And again, I'm in this position where it's like, God, somebody's gonna get hurt. I, I think you bring up a good point, like that, that traffic could increase, so.
Who is gonna bear the liability of this pier?
So, it, all of this falls on me right now.
You would have to ensure the pier?
Yeah. But again, that, in my mind, is a better option at the moment than I'm telling all these people to cross the highway at night when it's dark, when it's icy. That's liability.
How much were you guys willing to put in on that?
Well, we're, our capital's really tied up in option agreements for property right now, so we don't have a lot that we can just throw in the budget, we can contribute some. Uh, my idea was to maybe look at some of the edit offers to, from the county, um, that we could use for matching funds to develop the, the pier itself.
That's your option.
So we would, if, if this worked out, and it doesn't have to be today, but if it worked out, that twenty or thirty thousand of edit could be used as matching funds to bring in partners to build the pier. Because it would be Ceplex and Ceplex, it could be on, if, if it was deeded to, to Ceplex or public access or whoever has it, we're trying to find the vehicle. That we could bring in partners, utility partners like Duke and NIPSCO and, 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 uh, anybody that's willing to, to match those dollars to build this board or to build the, uh, pier out, so.
He was asking for forty-eight thousand seven hundred in my last meeting, I said, would you do, do you have?
But I wouldn't, I, by personally, I wouldn't do, I would recommend half, um, but I would make it match half. So it doesn't get used or utilized until there's a matching dollar to it. Uh, because I think we could bring Mike County to the table as well, I've already talked to, uh, their economic development team. Uh, it, it is of interest to them, they're just not wanting to give money to a private entity, which I, I would agree with. So we're trying to find, we're trying to get a vehicle like Ceplex, who's a non-for-profit conservancy agency, that we could bring the funds into, um, and then use it for match if somebody wants to really contribute to the area.
So then, this, uh, Shaker Freeman group here own the pier and they would bear the liability for it, then?
Is, is that possible?
I, I don't know about the liability, we'll have to check with that. I, I think at this point, since we're waiting on some communication from Ceplex, uh, Mr. Adams and I just wanted to update you guys with where we were on this because we realized the challenges from your end in terms of the, the funding and so on, so.
Well, I did have some phone calls, wondering why we're wanting to give edit money to private business and we're not gonna give it to anybody else.
Yeah, why would I do? But then, and that's not, that is definitely not the direction that Chris and I have talked about, I mean.
I understand that it's a concern, but setting up here, you know.
We need to correctly focus this, that it is not, we're handing money to the Mountain Carol, it's a safety project up there.
Well, we did give ten thousand dollars to save the muscles from the neighbors, for their attorney for that. We did give ten thousand towards that, so.
Well, that was, go ahead, let the muscles flop out there, right? All right, we're doing, okay, um.
I mean, I, I'm willing to give some, but not the whole, but, just for the safety of the people and our community.
Yeah, they have a reserve?
No, yeah, they, I made the index.
I think they would put a crosswalk in there.
Yeah, if Indot wasn't obviously as challenging as they are, I think that would be the ideal scenario, probably have to have a crosswalk.
They're really the ones that are dropping the ball and we're, we're having to look at where it's, where it's safe.
Yeah, if there's an avenue to get Indot to play another game here that I'm not familiar with, this is kind of, as a business owner, I know what the challenge is right now, that's the safety aspect. But as, um, you know, council sits and you guys are aware, if there's a way to communicate with Indot and say, hey, you have a responsibility in this too, uh, I'm.
Cameron, what about your thoughts with Indot, you've worked there forever?
It's a, it's a challenge.
Yep.
Well, we got, we're.
Dad, is there anything you've been due to write to the Indot to say, hey, the commissary's got a concern of safety, look, we could put in a crosswalk, crossing line?
Didn't, didn't write to them, you have to look up. Okay, highway engineer?
What's that?
What, how do we get, how do we get to Indot to say, we have a real problem here at the Mountain Carol intersection?
He's the report director.
Yeah, I would say the report director.
So do we need to start with our highway guy to make contact and get contact and get it to Ted? Cause I think we could probably solve all this issue right here.
Yeah, I think we could probably put some pressure on Indot from our angle, uh, from economic, economic development tourism, that kind of philosophy, um, and if the highway reached.
If we get pedestrians under the highway instead of crossing over the highway, that they would, for that.
Then they would probably throw some money in on it then?
Maybe, is that part of that ninety-two million?
For a pedestrian walkway, right? Yeah, I, I think that there are other, there are other avenues that could be explored prior to just building the pier, but.
Cause I understand the safety part of it, but I'm one of the people mad at me because I gave them, because it's what it looks like, to just give them money to the Mountain Carol, they'll just might take advantage of it. A lot of people don't understand it's a safety.
Who do you prefer to take the lead on that communication or how can we?
I, I think that the, that our county highway engineer should take the lead on it to.
How do you do that?
Make a contact there with Indot and then, once you found the correct pathway into this, well, then we can take it to economic development and if necessary, our attorney and the U and, and all that, but. We're just kind of letting Indot off the hook here, I think. What problem they have. If we do not put any money into it when we do others, that doesn't mean that we can't go back throughout the year and revisit it. We can amend the plan and put it in. I've got something I'm willing to bring up to my fellow commissioners here for a possible amendment to it already, so, um. I think we have the synergy here, the people to get this done, but. Which deal with Indot is not an easy deal.
We just got the little pass to, to move back to here.
So, uh, you think you can report back to us in two weeks on this, Kim?
Sure.
Next, next commissioner meeting, he's gonna tell us what he's found out and we'll all be a little smarter than we are today, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, man.
I hate to keep running you in here and you have to keep coming in, but I.
No, it's, I mean, again, it's a unique, it's a unique situation, so the more ideas, the better on this. At the end of the day, I just, I ha, I, I'm the one over there that has to watch the people walk across the highway.
I can see that, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And like Jake says, there's a lot of different little pots out here that shouldn't, shouldn't get all around. That's not really what he said, but that's a thought of it.
Back in the day, they used to hire the reserve deputies that come up there, they pay them so much money and they stop traffic to let people go.
Yeah, but now that we operate year-round, that, I mean, I'd have, I'd have a full-time deputy, you know what I mean?
I'm sure, though, they.
It costs a lot, be cheaper. Okay, I think we've done that one.
Well, also, just remind everybody, that also has to be approved by the council.
Correct, yeah. And we're, we're, I'm working with the council on just updating them on this specific project, so.
Okay, good, good. That, uh, Jake, that's kind of an interesting thought there because you may be the best liaison between commissioner and council. We've always had communication problems and maybe, uh, maybe your assistance on that could be very valuable, so. He'll be right back, do you have more, bringing, or we're still talking about edit?
Right.
What do you think on that, Lauren, what do you want? Ready to prove some stuff or not?
I think we should have talked about that one, yeah. We're not ready for that one.
That's what it adds up to.
Well, I remember from six weeks ago, it was shorter, but we're not very sure, is it? Now, does this number include any that we have back or is this just what's coming in this year?
Just what's coming in this year, which that's what you wanted.
I remember.
Three thousand, George?
Yeah. You remember, uh, just go exactly. I would like to bring up to you something then, okay, that I would like for us to consider, if not this year, to be considering on future years. I had the opportunity to go to the, uh, oh, ribbon cutting, whatever it was, the opening of the, uh, Abbey Libby Park out here. And, uh, they have, I mean, it's an incredible facility and they have done terrific things there. And we helped, we put in money in it last year. Uh, I'm concerned that the pathway around it and probably the, uh, parking lot, they brought, uh, buildings in. And, in fact, they're pretty good and all that stuff, but, uh. Okay, when I'm there, I see kids running around everywhere, which you want it to be, it's perfect. There's a little kid in a wheelchair out there who can't get down through those dark buildings. And no matter how he tries, that wheelchair is not gonna go down through those buildings. And I just, I mean, it's hard on an old man to watch all the little kids go off and here's this other one trying to get there, he can't go with them. I would like to see us put money into an asphalt top on whatever we feel likely to do out there of that. That path that circumnavigates the thing. Uh, and if we only want to do a hundred yards of it, that's fine, if we want to do more than that, it's just something that I, I want to throw out to you. I would be in favor of that, of putting a finished top on some of that. And I talked to Mike Patty about it and he said that he talked to Milestone and they're talking in terms of three hundred thousand dollars to do the whole parking lot and everything. I said, oh, we can't, we can't do that out of our.
But I don't think their base will be strong enough for, I mean.
That could be too, I don't know how deep the bases on that out there are.
Ken, could you go out and look at that, you know what we're talking about?
I know what you're talking about. But if it's just a path, you really don't need a, a thick section.
So it goes from like one diamond all the way around in front of the, the stage? That's where it stops, right? Back to the parking lot?
And if it's just for pedestrians and, um, bikes, that type of thing, you don't need very thickness.
Right.
But if you're gonna talk about the parking lot, then you'll have to keep it up.
Well, I, I, Mike Patty feels like they did a good job of, of grading the water to run towards the Rooster Heart Lake.
I got to see everybody one of the passes to go home, so.
Yeah. But the, the back area, what I really would, am interested in is just exactly what you're talking about, the ball diamonds down to the stage area, whatever you call that thing. Uh, and it's not very wide, I doubt if Mike might reach across it, it's pretty close. Do we, do we have the capability of paving that ourselves?
We do not.
We do not. So, I'm throwing it out there, I don't know that we have room this year, I don't know, we don't have room this year. I just, I think that's a very work, they've already had some ballgames out there that brought in several thousand people. Softball tournaments and stuff, I, I just.
Look for Delphi a little bit, so, they're not go out there.
Really?
They have worked, uh, gone off.
That won't happen.
It's not gonna happen, Cameron?
No, it's not gonna happen.
Okay.
Well, never tend, intended to happen. It wasn't, the park wasn't built for, uh, the other parks just to sit down and go out there, that was never being intentioned, it never has been.
Well, actually, I was just afraid of when I started hearing rumors that the mayor wanted to put a skate park down there.
But that could be a rumor thing.
Yes, so, applications open November first of this year to December first for the next level trails program for the state of Indiana. And because that is a trail within a park, that, that would be an eighty-twenty match.
Boy, there you go.
So, I think we'll just, we can, no pun, and throw a dart at it and, and see if that's, that's a viable, um, trail system that they would be willing to invest in. We've got a decent track record of trails in Delphi, so I think if that were to work, it would be a trail.
Would you take lead on that?
Yes.
We have to file by November first.
Yeah, I just pulled it up, so it says the application period for the third round of funding will begin November first, twenty twenty-one.
Wait, I'm not quite getting it, the applications, uh, begin to be accepted on November first or they have to be in by November first?
They have to be in by December first, just go from November to December. They have up to twenty-five million dollars and this would.
Well, we could squeeze our project out of twenty-five million. Twenty-five million for the whole state?
Yes. That amphitheater was a max for the state, so they already have, this one's already on the radar, so this would be a good fit for this project, the trail project. Because that, that amphitheater was on that, there is, through Susan, the deputy, uh, lieutenant governor. So this would be on that radar as well because it goes right to that amphitheater that they already maxed funds for, so, I think we'll be.
I'll work with Kent on just setting up that application, it seems pretty cut and dry.
Would you, uh, be able to report back to us in two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Not sure. Okay, we, we'd appreciate it very much. Okay, we, we'd appreciate it very much. Okay, so you, what do you want to do about the rest of it here?
So, that's going to be put on hold.
What about the old settlers, you get any word on that?
Say yes and no, we don't have to do them all at the same time, just want to say yes or no, keep on going.
Well, I think we're good on the economic development for two years.
Yep.
I'm good with that one. Now, if we had questions about old settlers?
He sent you an email, he's calling you now.
Well, now, I read the comment, and it says that they're on track to dissolve the chamber.
So who's that from, Matt?
Seems like it, uh, it's a little nebulous, and so, who would get the three thousand dollars here?
He was, he kind of wrote to you to make sure that it would not. We didn't want to go away with old settlers, but he wants somebody to take over old settlers. If the chamber is no longer there, if some of what was said at the last meeting was kind of misspoken. You can let it. Yes.
Okay, so, let's start at the top, about Carroll County Parks, do you want to give them three grand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Senior Family Services, ten thousand dollars. That's for their fuel.
Five?
Yeah, I, they asked for ten, but you said you always did it, you always gave five, so I just want to make sure.
We always gave you five?
Yeah, but they could, they could use the ten, I'm just telling you what he used to do, I'm not.
What do you think then, guys, do we want to give full ten, or?
Fuel prices doubled.
Joe's fuel price?
Trader Joe's got us good.
Yep. So I'm getting a feeling that both of you think ten's fine.
Yes, sir.
What about Chamber?
They got that new program.
This is lower than when he gave last year, that the request is lower, so.
This request is lower than last year. So, everybody happy with sixty-two-five?
Yep.
Check it out, Carroll County Highway.
Well, we always say to do it, but council don't, but I think this is for, this is not for the materials this time, you reworded it, right?
Uh, this was for vehicles.
Vehicles, so, yeah, I'm good with that one, but then last time we did the two forty for materials, and they got enough, he's doing it for vehicles.
What vehicles is it for?
It'll be a tandem and a one-and-a-half-ton dump.
Squeeze all that out of two hundred thousand? Is it there? Okay. One-and-a-half-ton dump.
They'll probably come up with a cloud for the smaller areas.
Yeah, it's for the small areas, but we can rotate that into other uses once it gets over.
Okay, so, you heard?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Madam Carroll, I like the project, I think we don't have a full, complete project yet.
We're going to hold on, hold on that.
Hold. Uh, Burlington Festival, three grand.
Yeah.
Yes, Old Settlers, we're going to hold on that, right? Economic Development, we already said?
Yeah.
This, I have, Lauren has, or somebody has written on here, which likes that, right, two years of economic development. So that's a hundred and sixty-four each year for two years.
However, they can't raise it on them.
Yeah.
Jake can't get a fair raise. You're stuck for two years, Jake.
And we already took care of the amendment to the park, right?
Yes.
Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay, so. Have you got a total error?
I have, we have to take these, uh, three thousand off. I have to give in forty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, probably four hundred and four.
Forty-eight, seven, and three thousand, that's all we're taking off, right? Fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollars away from the four ninety-four, four fifty-four, and fifty. When do we get fifty, oh, that's what's coming in? No, that's an economic development, one fifty cents. How about we give them two fifty-five, and let them score under fifty cents? Oh, it's all in the contract the way it is? We got four thirty-seven, that's what it is? Well, I'm believing the fifty cents the way it is, that says they owe you fifty cents.
Well, do we have contract already?
You do.
Yeah, there's some money.
You need to wait, sign that contract after the council approves it.
Four, four-two, seven fifty-four, fifty. And fifty-one, seven hundred, that works out. Four ninety-four, you're right, four. So the grand total here is four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents.
How much do, how much do the total look?
Which total you want, total was put out?
Total we're getting in.
Getting in.
Four twenty-eight.
Four twenty-eight?
And one ninety-two, two.
So we're.
Four, yeah, yeah, sorry, four ninety-two, two-two-eight.
And we got a little bit of bang. No, I mean, from the last year.
Yeah, we've got almost a half, just from just the two hundred forty thousand, we got ninety, two years of room for, I think.
So, that. Okay, if you want to amend it, at page of the paper up there, you're going to have a match for the trail, here's the Abbey Living Park, we've got enough money.
And have you some of that money that you're saying, like the Abbey Living, and other things, and also some, um, to the, yeah, they die.
What about?
For grants or something?
Building.
Little buildings.
Two years ago, you were going to hold some back.
That's right, we got that, we didn't think real strong about.
Well, we've got an ambulance drop to pay for, they're coming up soon, because if we lose the contract, we'll build a third one.
That comes out with heat cap.
Heat cap.
So what was the final figure?
The final figure was four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Four four two?
Four four two, seven five four, fifty.
So we can live on that?
If we, yeah, if we're going to approve that today, we need, I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve what we talked about. Parks, Family Services, Chamber, Highway.
I got it.
Festival, and E D C.
He is a member of a. Okay, I'm just, it's a bunch of money. I have a motion before us and a second to approve Carroll County Parks, Senior Family Services, Chair, Chamber of Commerce, Carroll County Highway. Burlington Festival, and Carroll County Economic Development Corporation, in aggregate together of four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Am I right, gentlemen? So I call for a vote, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed, okay? And we will be revisiting all that. Now we're ready to move ahead, no, you got something else?
Bob Reeve was rescheduled for November the first, and so is Bob Burton. Did I think of it? Yes, I do. I had Ted look over this executive order, uh, my city order extending the paid sick leave, emergency paid sick leave, and we did a couple of changes on it. Ted, can you tell them what we changed?
I added to the second paragraph, revised that, to clarify that. The compensation for up to eighty hours, maximum eighty hours, requires the health department have, throws balls or, or by actual quarantine. Due to a employee's documented positive test for COVID-19 infection, the testing documentation, and since testing documentation shall be maintained by the health department. Through certification of the employee's eligibility for compensation, shall be furnished to the auditor before compensation may be paid. So, making sure that it's COVID related and documented, and the auditor doesn't maintain the, the medical information. This health department's responsibility, and they have been providing that information, so it's not just for any sick leave, uh, it has to be COVID related. That's the change, change of number two, then, I added a paragraph, which is number eight, to clarify that the eighty-hour maximum. Will be a cumulative maximum for each eligible employee, which, that eighty hours will reduce like any prior periods of eligible compensation. So you don't give new eighty hours each incident.
It wasn't very clarified.
Correct, it clarifies what, what we thought it said, but it wasn't there, those are the two changes.
So more or less, they have to be quarantined by the health department, or have to, or positive.
Right, and the documentation of that needs to be, to be developed by the department.
Which makes it more clear, because, and also, I've had employees want to know if they've already collected, and they're like the second time, if they have to be quarantined for a, a young one, you know, or a child or whatever. That's quite fine too, because they would be quarantined by the health department. We just need a little bit more clarification, because people were taking off a couple of days and getting tested, being negative, we weren't sure what to do. And the health department didn't come to bill the tests, so it, it's just help, helps us clarify what can be accepted.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the change of order twenty-one seven, that's right.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve Executive Order Number twenty, twenty-one dash zero seven. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
And I misspoke, and Bob Reeve is here now. And Bob Reeve is here now, so, uh, I'm not, not rescheduling that. So you have Bob Reeve and Ted left. You have Bob Reeve and Ted left.
Uh, who's the first, and about next, I'll get you some, Bob, okay, Bob, you're on.